Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council for a city council workshop this evening. And call upon Kristin Russell to a roll call.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Proton Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Very good. We've got two workshops tonight. The first is going to be on the tobacco and vaping age 21 purchase update. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What is before you tonight is update on tobacco and vaping purchase age 21. And since we've last discussed this, back on December the 20th, 2019, the federal government enacted legislation that increased the purchase age for vaping and tobacco products to age 21 effective immediately. So that basically means the city council does not have to act on actually increasing the purchase age for those products to age 21. What the discussion that we desire to have tonight is how the council would like the city team to proceed on how we would implement some form of enforcement to make sure that the age, the purchase age 21 law is upheld and adhered to. I want to, I think it's important to start this discussion with where we started as a city team in terms of what we understood that the council wanted. What we understood the council wanted in the beginning was for us to enact, I would describe as a fairly, I guess, friendly sort of program where we would have application and payment for city-issued retail licenses. However, we wouldn't necessarily conduct, you know, what we understood is that we would not conduct background checks, certainly the background checks that we conduct with liquor in accordance with liquor laws. We would increase the, it would increase the minimum legal sales age 21, which is already taken care of. There would be identification checks required for sales. There would be no self-service of tobacco or vaping products. The enforcement would be complaint-driven as opposed to proactive enforcement options. And that if there was a complaint that required some sort of a citation, we would appoint a hearing officer to review the complaints. And the hearing officer would have the ability to revoke licenses. And that the Arvada municipal court would be, would have jurisdiction over criminal violations. And that we would conduct some form of compliance checks, however, they would be random and not necessarily in a prescribed or program minimum number of such checks. In the course of looking at options, we consulted with our colleagues in Jefferson County. The county has a very robust tobacco and vaping program, education program there. And they have advised a number of our surrounding jurisdictions on ordinances that are intended to be pretty robust in terms of being able to deal with tobacco and vaping products and the sale of those products. And how those products would be dealt with from a compliance standpoint. And what the county team told us, and they also had some allies with the CU Anson program and other resources available, they, what they recommended is, and what they deem as the best practice, is a stronger, more proactive enforcement with undercover minor compliance checks as the key to success and effectiveness in really implementing a sales, sale age 21 ordinance. So, and they also pointed out that nearly all of our surrounding jurisdictions have enacted ordinances that have a much more robust compliance program with proactive undercover, you know, minors going into purchase products and seeing how the retail establishment, whether or not they ask for ID and those kinds of things. So, we felt that was something that we should bring to the city council's attention. And especially now with the tobacco purchase age moved up to age 21. What we're seeking to find out tonight from the council is, do you want us to have a much more robust compliance program with undercover minor checks and, you know, higher fees in order to, higher licensing fees in order to fund a compliance program? What exactly that compliance program will look like, we have not gone that far yet. We wanted to check with you before we went that far. But what I would imagine is that we would have to design a program with fees that would be sufficient to support one, perhaps two, but one to two, you know, inspectors that would, that would check for compliance at the retail establishments that sell tobacco and vaping products in order to make sure that they are selling to people, not selling to people under the age of 21. And, you know, the other option I think is to look and to wait until we see how the federal, federal government through the FDA enforces the new federal law. And there's also state legislation that's been proposed as well. Right now, it's known as HB 20-1001, which proposes a statewide tobacco retail licensing program and raises the minimum legal age to 21. But again, we don't know what that bill is going to look like and whether or not it even continues in the legislative process and what it will be at the end of the legislative process. What we're reminded is that a local government can always enact tougher laws than state or federal government. They can enact laws that are weaker than the state or federal government laws. But we could always enact something that is stronger. So that's the discussion that's before you tonight. And again, if we are directed to look at a more robust licensing program, we would bring you back a model so that you can see what it would look like in terms of fees and how we would implement it, you know, the number of staff that we may need to hire in order to conduct the program. And so you would get an opportunity to look at this. In other words, you'd have another bite at the apple if you give us direction to come back with a more robust licensing program. So that's, our next step would be to receive, would be to act on the feedback we receive from you tonight.
Very good. Let's start with that input. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for doing the background work that you've done to this point. And I'm hoping that there's an opportunity to get some more information. But just a couple of clarifying questions. When you said, you said that right now the thought would be, and I think this is the direction that the county also is going, that there would be no background checks?
No. Well, that's, that was, that was the assumption we operated on in the beginning. If we did a robust program, I believe there would be background checks.
Okay. Well, because my follow-up to that was going to be, so when we do, when we, when somebody comes in and applies for a liquor license, it sounded like there was a background check. And what are we looking for in that background check to determine whether or not they're eligible or deemed out?
So the background check, and no, Kristin will correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here, the background check is actually defined by state law.
It's character and reputation of the applicant, and it's a financial background to see that the money is theirs, that they're putting into the business.
Okay. And, but right now, the state hasn't enacted that yet.
No.
But there's maybe in this, in this bill that they've got out there today. So there could be some things that the state requires.
Right.
Now, if, if we have our own application fee and the state has an application fee, can we, can there be the two fees or is it one and the same?
Yes, we can have two separate fees.
Okay. So if the state enacts something different, they're going to pile on with whatever fee they may pile on with? I don't know if that's the right word, but I heard it and it sounded good. Okay. But, so we have a fee and that fee then could be used to offset any costs incurred for the compliance checks and so on and so forth.
Correct.
Now, as it relates to, so I'm assuming that this would, those compliance checks would fall under the law enforcement, under the police department's duties?
Correct.
So, so not, and I'm just using this as an example, so we have our sworn personnel and our non-sworn personnel. And, you know, the folks that sit at the counter down in the, in the police station, I don't, they're not sworn personnel. Is that correct?
No. So we would, we would have, we would, we're assuming we would run it as we do the liquor compliance checks, which would be a civilian employee who has the ability to issue enforcement.
Who works for the police department. Okay.
Correct.
And then, so we determine that there's an offense and it then goes to our courts. So then we also have to have ordinances in place that the court can then fine again or issue a fine, or how does that work?
Yeah. So we would have to look at an ordinance that would enable us to issue some sort of penalty based on, based on the, you know, the infraction.
Okay. And then just make a general comment here. We had our Jeffco R1 School Board Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago with the superintendent and two members of the school board. And they were very happy that we were having this conversation and said that they would, you know, they would support any additional measures that council would put into place because they, because of the challenges that they have at the schools. And they know that, you know, it's like anything, if kids are going to get it, they're going to get it, one way or another. But they, they recognize that there is an issue and that they would be supportive. So I just wanted to add that bit of information for council. So, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
So when you talk about fees, how does it compare with our liquor fee? I mean, is it going to be about the same price? Or is there any opportunity to, maybe if a liquor store wants to do vaping products, it's all in that one process or?
You know, we haven't really explored what the fees would be, but we would aim for those fees to be enough to support the cost of administering the licensing and enforcement program.
Okay. So I would, I would make a recommendation that, you know, if it's a liquor store that's already going through a background check and doing everything that's the same thing, that they could just check a checkbox and say they're going to do vaping and liquor. I'm assuming they could do the same thing and not just double the fees.
I thi, I think we could look at that. We would certainly need to at least recoup. I think we could, if there's a licensing program already for liquor, maybe we could see how we could not necessarily have to charge for that fee. But in terms of the compliance checks, we're going to need to make sure that we could recover. Yeah, recover those costs.
I could understand that. And if I was only a vaping store, then of course I would pay the full fee of whatever that might be. I just wanted to make sure we're thinking about, you know, just because it's another thing to regulate, it's not just times two on a liquor store. So, because they're, in fact, it sounds like what's being discussed here, the liquor store owner is going to go through possibly a more robust background check. So we shouldn't, you know, we should
Right.
not necessarily penalize them for, you know, for going a little bit more above and beyond. The background checks are very interesting for me.
Right.
I think that those should continue no matter what, but.
Okay.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you so much. I'm very excited that we're looking at this and support wholeheartedly a more robust program, including the background checks. What I haven't heard anything about tonight is flavors and taking those away completely. That is something I'm very much in support of just because I feel like, I've spoken to a lot of adults that vape, even, even adults that vape would not vape if the flavors were not there because it's awful if there's no flavor. I've never done anything like it, so I have no idea. But they are saying it's just awful. So I think if the adults that won't vape because there's no flavors, I think kids may not vape because there's no flavors. And I think that will help drive down that number as well. We've received that letter. We all up here received a letter from the dean of students over at Arvada High School just asking us to do more and have a more robust, active enforcement. So I support wholeheartedly that as well. And I will speak just to the fees on the, the state versus the local. We do that already for liquor. And I'm totally in the, in the same court with Councilmember Pfeiffer on that, so.
Let me give, okay, Lauren, Ms. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to echo the sentiments we've heard so far. I'm excited that we're looking at this. And in terms of compliance, I think it's important that we do it ourselves for a couple of reasons. The first is, what's the point of having a law if it's just a polite ask? We all know that the vast majority of our vendors are excellent and do things in good faith, but there's always somebody who tries to cheat the system. And so we need to keep an eye out for that and we need to be vigilant. And the other point is, there's a case to be made for waiting to see what the federal government will do. But do we really want to cede that kind of authority to the feds locally? So I, I think it's important that we look at doing this and making sure it's the right thing for our community because we know it the best. Echoing that, I don't want to overburden the regulations on our liquor suppliers and suppliers who are already perhaps selling tobacco products. So trying to keep the fees and things in line with what we're already seeing so that it's a nice balance and able to fund the checks that are needed. And I would be interested in learning more about the flavors and what the impacts would be there before making, forming an opinion on that issue.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a couple of questions, Mr. Devon, for you. Do you know approximately how many retail outlets we have in the city of Arvada that sell tobacco products? Are we talking about a small number or are we talking about a really large number?
Somewhere between 100 and 150.
Okay. And to be a retailer of tobacco products these days, is there any regulation at all? Is there any permit at all? Is there any license at all?
No.
So anybody can become a retailer at any time in any properly zoned retail?
Yeah, with the exception of a city of Arvada business license.
Correct. Yeah. Right. Exactly. Okay. And in, are liquor retailers allowed to sell tobacco products as part of their liquor license? Or, or the liquor license doesn't prevent them from doing?
The liquor license does not prevent them from doing so.
Okay. And does that include vaping products too, or is it just traditional tobacco products?
Those that choose to sell vaping products can also sell them as well.
Okay. Okay. Question I might have would be, besides the schools, have we heard any complaints from the, the community about access to tobacco? Or does it all revolve around complaints from the school district?
Well, while council may recall that a member of our, I believe our Human Services Advisory Committee, Laura Andes, did send a very extensive document to the council that I think, I believe we distributed. And, and, you know, off and on, we do receive, I think, some correspondence from, from parents that are concerned about this issue that may well be associated with Ms. Andes and others that I believe she has transmitted immediately, to me at least, that she does represent a large number of, or a significant number of parents that have some concerns. So I think there are concerns in the community. Have we received tons of correspondence about this? I would say no, but we certainly have received some.
Yeah. My recollection of Ms. Andes' communications with us, and I met with her, was that it was centered around school, school, access by schools, children and, and children passing it around in schools. Is that what you recall or?
Absolutely. I think schools are definitely a part of the, you know, a big part of the concern.
Sure.
I think a lot of what we've heard from the schools is that vaping products are packaged in a manner that makes it very difficult to detect. So that when students, you know, bring these products to schools, they can, you know, vape and, and basically, you know, it's, it's hard to notice. It's hard to determine, you know, who's, who's using the vaping products and that type of thing. So that, we certainly have gotten a significant amount of input from the schools.
Right. Okay. Are vaping products available online? Can you buy them without walking into a retail establishment?
Well, I don't know because I have not tried to do that. But I, I mean, I imagine they probably are since almost everything is, seems to be available online, maybe with some restrictions.
Right. Okay. And to your knowledge, the schools don't allow tobacco use in the schools?
Correct.
Even by the teachers anymore?
My understanding is that, yeah, my understanding is that the campuses are basically smoke-free zones. I believe that's the case. I, you know, I could find out for sure, but I believe that is the case.
Sure. And I know schools have always had, there's always been the smoking spot at schools that was across the street from the school where, you know, everybody, when I was a kid, it wasn't legal to smoke there either, but everybody kind of looked the other way. Is that still going on at schools?
I honestly don't know.
Okay. So the, the question I would have is, do you have any idea of, you know, what the costs of implementing some kind of a regulatory framework would be?
We would need to bring that back to you. And, and, you know, we'd need, we would need to understand the, the costs associated with an inspector who would do a, you know, a compliance checks multiple times on the, you know, so, you know, 100 to 150 retailers that we have, how often, how much they would need to do, how many hours that would take, what their support costs would be. We would have to bring that information back to you.
Yeah. Would, would that likely be within the city staff, someone we already have on staff who would just get that added to their job? Or would that require an FTE? My sense is everybody's pretty busy around here and that there's nobody just needing extra duties.
You know, one of the things we would look at is could we ask our liquor inspector to double? And I don't think, I think the answer to that is no. I don't, I believe she's busy enough as it is with liquor compliance checks. So I would say it would require an FTE.
Right. Okay. And an FTE and support everything that it costs is at least $100,000, right, probably?
Absolutely. Yeah. I would say, you know, if you would need to add a vehicle to that, you know, that's a possibility as well.
Right. Right. So we'd be talking about retail outlets incurring costs of somewhere 500,000 bucks a year or something like that to be able to pay for a program like that?
That would probably be on the high side, but that would, that's a possibility.
Right. Okay. When, when you said we met with the county, was that the county government or was that an advocacy organization in the county?
It was part of the county government. It was part of the Jefferson County Department of Public Health.
Department of Public Health. Okay. And so do they have any ability to help defray costs from their request?
I don't believe the county has any ability to defray costs. I, I, there, there may be some potential assistance through grants to help get a program started or maybe provide some educational materials. But I think most of the hard costs associated with licensing and enforcement, compliance and inspection would be, have to be borne by the city, which I would advocate then would be recovered through the fees charged to the retailers.
Right. Okay. The, I think one of the pieces of legislation last year that passed was a ability for local governments to apply taxes to tobacco. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And would that be another way of going about the same thing, rather than charging a retailer a licensing fee that we could advocate for our citizens passing a tax measure that would, that would apply a tax to tobacco products that then could be used for the same purpose?
Well, we'd have to be careful there because my understanding of the law, and we could do a little bit more research on this, but my understanding of the law is that if we did pass a tax, additional tax, for example, on tobacco product or products or cigarettes, it would, it could replace or supplant the cigarette tax that we already get from the state. So we could end up in a situation where we might, where it would be a zero-sum game and we wouldn't necessarily be able to get the resources we need to conduct a compliance program.
Could we, could we look at that as part of, as part of this about what, what do we get in, in tobacco tax from the state? And what, what kind of a tax would we have to levy on tobacco sales to both replace the tax we'd lose from the state and also then provide enough revenue to fund a compliance program of some, some measure or not?
Yeah.
Okay. How, do you know, any of the other places who have passed tobacco regulations that require these licensing and compliance checks and all that kind of stuff? What are they charging for licensing fees?
You know, it's, it varies, but I think it's in the, in the range of four to five to $600, somewhere in that vicinity.
Annually?
Annually, yeah.
And, and do you know, do any of those, any of those, in any of those cities that have done that, has it been around long enough for them to see what that did to the number of outlets that sell tobacco in their community?
In terms of the economic impact on the outlets?
Yeah, sure.
I've not, I've not seen any data on that. So I, I don't know. Anecdotally, what we've heard is that it does seem to be curbing the sales of tobacco products to, to, you know, people under age 21, but we necessarily haven't seen any data on that.
Well, or changing the number of doors that sell to, I mean, my, my, I guess my wild guess would be there would be fewer doors selling tobacco, but the ones that remain would sell more. That the amount of tobacco sold in the community is going to be the amount sold in the community. The question is, out of how many outlets does it get sold?
Right. Yes. And we can certainly, when we bring back additional information, we can certainly include that in the information we bring back.
Could, could we look in, could we look into that? Because I think that has a, has an effect of shaping, shaping what we do.
How much more filibustering are you going to do here?
No, this is it. Just, just, I would just get my questions answered. I'll just, I'll just make, I'll just make a quick, quick statement about it, about it. I, I would, I would love to know the answers to the questions here because that would, that's what it takes for us to kind of make a proper decision on it. Personally, I would, I, I, after, after getting that information, I'd be happy to make a comment on what I think I would want to do, so.
Great. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Marriott's question about the online sales actually piqued my curiosity because I didn't know the answer to that. So I looked it up. God bless the internet. So yes, you may buy online tobacco products, including vaping. However, what I'm seeing here is that you must have an age verification process that includes date of birth, social security number, and an uploaded legal ID. So it looks like it would be actually more stringent than you would have with a local establishment. And you said the licensing fees would likely between, be between $400 to $600?
That's based on what I understand from the other cities that have enacted similar ordinances.
With respect, it is my opinion that at $500 is going to break your business. Your business was likely not going to make it anyways.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
I was, I looked at the internet too and found the same thing, probably not different. But it said it had to be a government-issued ID. And on top of it, what they're doing is they're requiring their retailers, they're trying to get all their retailers, they're hitting about 40, well, this one particular brand, that they have to scan the barcode of the back of the ID to be able to sell it. And if they don't, basically there's some violations and they withdraw their product from the retailer. So, I mean, there's a three-strike rule they're following. And then the answer to the question around the flavors, the most popular brand that's probably causing these issues in the school have stopped selling flavors. If you haven't noticed, they only have two flavors, Smith-on-Normal. And they're not going to do any flavors until the FDA reviews and approves them. So, just tidbit. That helped you out. You don't have to worry about that later.
Ms. Ford?
Mr. Devon, I, I'm in agreement with John here that I'd like to see a little bit more information in terms of, of costs and also the effect of licensing on businesses and other communities.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I just had one follow-up question that Councilmember Marriott brought up on the vaping tax. If it's possible, I just want to know if you can do a tax on vaping that's separate from a tobacco tax so that it wouldn't interfere with the money that we got from the state.
So there would be an issue, obviously. I think Mr. Marriott mentioned this, but we would have to have a approval by voters to establish any sort of tax. I think it depends on how the funds we receive from the state are allocated. So if those, if the prohibition is on both tobacco and vaping and those taxes come from us or those funds come from us from the state based on both of those things, then there might be, we might not have as much freedom to differentiate between the two on a local level. That probably doesn't make a huge amount of sense right now because that was a very jumbled answer, but I will get you a better one.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to ask the question. I, I did have several conversations with some big tobacco companies prior to this meeting. And one of their biggest gripes was that vaping is not taxed like tobacco is taxed. So that's why I was wondering if they're not paying the same taxes, if that can be separated. If we went to a vote of the people saying, would you allow us to tax vaping? I would just wonder if it's separate. I, that was my question, if we could get some more information on that.
Yeah, we will definitely do that. We generally do have a little bit more leeway to determine how our local taxes are levied so long as we have voter approval. So I think it's probably something that we could do, but I will double-check and make sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Marriott?
Do you know how many, how much tobacco tax money we get? And then what do we do with it?
I don't know that number tonight, but I can certainly provide it to you. And it's basically
That'd be good to know.
Pardon me? Yeah.
Just when you're getting all this other stuff, that'd be good to know too.
Sure. And, and essentially, it's, it's, it's money that we utilize as part of the general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me wrap this up. And, Mr. Marriott, I was not making light of your questions. I certainly, you know, but knowing where you stand on the issue, it was, I was finding some amusement in your very good cross-examination of our it was, I was finding some amusement in your very good cross-examination of our...
I haven't even said where I stand yet.
Well, we, we, we know where you sit and therefore we know where you stand. My thoughts on this matter, frankly, the background checks are not a big issue for me from the perspective that, you know, these are companies, these are businesses that have been around for a long time selling tobacco or vaping products anyway. It's, I don't see you having to have the kind of robust background checks like you do for liquor license. I think with liquor license, it's a whole different arena. You know, I think if they're qualified to have a business license, they should be qualified to be able to sell. On the other hand, I fully support a robust enforcement system. So, and frankly, that's going to, you know, the vast majority of these folks are going to do it the right way all the time. There may be some safeguards with the barcode checking and things like that. You know, every time I go to King Supers now to buy a six-pack of beer, they have to have my driver's license, even though I'm sixty-three flipping years old. But, but that's the reality. You also can't buy beer before eight o'clock in the morning, which I find...
Can you buy non-alcohol?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I support the, the thoughts of a, of a robust enforcement system. I think the questions that have been asked in terms of, you know, what's the real cost going to be to us so that we can make this as impact-neutral to our city budget? As, as, I'm not looking this to be a revenue generator, but it certainly needs to be revenue-neutral. So we need to get those numbers.
Well, just for the record, you can't buy Advil cold in sinus without your driver's license and a barcode.
Okay. Ms. Marriott.
Sorry, I almost always defer and let you have the last word. And I withheld from saying what I'm for, what I'm not for here, but I feel like I have to. So the, I, I would be in favor of a couple of things. One is, the federal, federal law has been in effect for about six weeks now. I'd like to see where that goes before we go making changes in our community. Secondly, within the next hundred and twenty days for sure, but probably the next ninety days, the state will either take action or not take action. And until we know what action the state takes and what the ramifications of that are, I think at this point, we're kind of just speculating and posturing. And so I would recommend that we, that we hold off until we see the end of the legislative session, which is only the first week of May. It's coming very close. So, so those would be my first two recommendations. Beyond that, my next would be that if we are going to license and enforce on tobacco, tobacco sellers and tobacco outlets, that we have a program that's as inexpensive and efficient as possible by whatever means that is. I heard Councilwoman Simpson say, "Well, if this breaks your business, you didn't have a very good business anyway." So it's very interesting. I spoke to the CE, this is tangential, but I spoke to the CEO of Village Inn Restaurants last week. They just filed bankruptcy, closed six of eight restaurants in this territory, filing for bankruptcy nationwide to reorganize. And they're exiting this market. Interestingly, in the same day, Bar Louie, which is a totally different type of establishment, also filed for bankruptcy. The CEO of Village Inn told me that the, their bankruptcy filing was contained completely within two things that you would think are so small, they shouldn't have made a difference. It was the minimum wage increase, raised their labor costs, and then over the last three years, their average property tax on their locations have doubled. And those things have put them out of business. And so I think, I bring that up only because our retailers out there are not as flush as people might think. That it's a very fine line for businesses that are on the right side of that line and not on the right side of that line. And with an expensive program to enforce the laws on them that they will pay or that they'll have to pay, there will be some who will choose to no longer sell tobacco products. And the, the sales of tobacco products that used to go to their bottom line will no longer go there. And that may very well push them, if not over that line, it can push them closer to that line. And for the ones who do choose to pay for a fee and continue to sell tobacco products, some of them may very well profit if there are fewer doors selling tobacco. They may, they may do better. But, but some of them may also lose as well. And if we have a tobacco problem within our schools and within our young people, we have lots of avenues to address that. I'll concede that this is one of them, but this shouldn't be the only one. And it shouldn't be borne by the small businesses in our community, those hard-working people who provide the products and services that we all take advantage of every single day. And so I think we have the, at least we should have the responsibility to ensure that any type of a regulatory framework we put in place, whether it's strict or not strict, that it at least be as low-cost and efficient as possible so that they have at least a fair shot to continue making it in their business. So that's, that's my filibuster. Thank you for letting me, letting me have it.
Very good. You've opened the gates. Ms. Miller.
Thank you. I just reminded me that it's something I didn't say earlier. And that's that I would not love to see us wait until the state has done what they're going to do and wait another ninety days. I think that we have some great partners in the metro area that we can ask to share their programs. It sounds like you've already seen them. We can start to put the numbers together. It doesn't mean that we need to act on it this minute, but I would much rather see us start this now.
Ms. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, when I go back to Councilman Marriott's remarks there, I, I do absolutely support minimizing the impact on businesses as much as possible. I want that to be clear. My remark was more that I do not view five hundred dollars being the make or break point for businesses. We're not talking about a fifty thousand dollar licensing fee here, in which case, if we were, that's a very different conversation. And so I just want to be very clear that I am not trying to make light of the margins of our businesses, nor am I talking about corporate mismanagement, nor the changing business model of restaurants and property taxes, which are all completely separate issues from the one we're discussing this evening. And second to Ms. Miller's point, I think it's good to not kick the can down the road. It would be good just to have the numbers together and sort of a framework for a plan so that once we do know how the federal and the state line up, we can then insert what's right for our community, perhaps leave a little bit of wiggle room. But let's just not wait and see. Let's start getting our ducks in a row so that we're prepared.
Very good. There are no other lights on. I'm not going to call upon any other council member for any other closing arguments. But, 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 well, I'm going to take the last word because I always do. But, but I think we ought to at least be looking, let's not just put things on hold until the, until the legislature's done.
Well, we'll start to put together a program. We'll bring it back to the council. I believe we can do that before the legislative session ends. But maybe by that time, we'll have some understanding of what that bill looks like, as well as what the federal government may or may not be doing. So we'll get, we'll get this back to council at a workshop so we can continue this discussion as soon as possible.
Very good. Okay, now we're going to move on to something that's totally easy. The remapping of the northwest portion of the city is in conjunction with the land development code update. And I know that Ryan's going to have a presentation on this. And I've made the decision in terms of this workshop tonight that I would like to hear from affected property owners if they would like to give us their thoughts as well.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rob Smetana is on a well-earned vacation, and so I am substituting for him tonight. You normally see him do some of these land development code updates. And the, what I wanted to present tonight was, and what council know and specifically the community as well, is that we, at the beginning of the year, we talked about the land use patterns and how they would be updated relative to the rest of the city as part of the update of the land development code. But Candela's and the Candela's area in the northwest part of our city is somewhat of a unique case because not all of the water that is required for its complete build-out has been allocated to this area. And as such, some of the land use patterns in that area need to be considered a little bit differently and a little bit more deliberately than the rest of the city. And that's why we've separated the rest of the city from land use in Candela's. The first couple of slides here are just a couple of reminder slides where we've been through this process. This is, knock on wood, hopefully, the last workshop on a land development code-related topic that we're going to have before the public hearing starts, which it is the land development code and the land use for the rest of the city is going to go to the planning commission on March third. But these are all the things that we've done so far. And that last check mark is update the zoning maps with the new zoning districts. We've had a lot of public participation, including many neighborhood meetings, open houses, office hours and tons of comments through the process. Tonight, what we specifically wanted to talk about was the proposed zoning in the northwest Arvada in that quadrant between Indiana and Highway ninety-three and north of Highway seventy-two. And based on those proposals, what comprehensive plan amendments may be required? In, in the next part, I will ask the property owners that were interested in making a brief presentation to come up after that section. And then we'll get to a part where we'll wrap up another question that City Council had related to affordable housing parking. And we'll do that a little bit separate from the discussion with our, our property owner partners here. Jumping into this map, what we wanted to show you here is what is the proposed zoning in the Candela's area? And what I will describe to you is because of the limited amount of water and the zoning that exists there, we are not making wholesale changes to this area in the same way we are doing other parts in the city. All of the residential areas, so that's the, the tan part that's up there, that is essentially where houses are already existing, that is going to remain in the PUD district that was created when it was initially brought into the city. And so there are no changes, no changes to the zoning there. Other tan areas in this map are along Highway ninety-three. Just there, that reservoir there by the railroad track, that's called Smart Reservoir. Those are all existing PUD areas, PUD BP and PUD BPR. Those are planning on staying the same. The colors in red are commercial or mixed-use zoning. So the Yentor property, if you're familiar with that, that's about seventy-six acres near Highway ninety-three. It looks, I can't describe the shape, but it's the, the red property there next to the, the purple property. That would be general commercial. The PUD property between the purple and the red, that would remain the same. And then there are some other properties remaining the same. The Parkway Right-Away, between the Parkway Right-Away and Smart, it's not Smart, Welton Reservoir, that would remain PUD. The areas of change that are being proposed tonight in this map are the yellow area. That is currently zoned PUD BPR in the comp plan, or not, excuse me, in the zoning map. And the property owners are requesting a change to R-six zoning. And we can certainly ask questions and, and give more detail, but they're going to give a presentation about why they believe that is the right fit for this property and how they want to move forward in that area. The, the red dot just to the left of the area, that is Candela's Point. That's where Resolute Blue Rooming and some other businesses have recently gone in. That will be commercial. Over on the right-hand side by where King Supers is, it's the east, it's my right hand, the east. The King Supers and the property north of it and the property to the west of it would all be CG. That's general commercial. That's what that would be zoned to. And the property to the south of it, that's the property we refer to as the Fortune Property. Mr. Fortune is here. And he is also going to have his team present what his future vision on that side is. Staff is proposing a MXS district, a mixed-use district, but I think Mr. Fortune has some other proposals for land uses on it as well. And then the other parcel that would change with this is an R-twenty-four parcel. It is more of a khaki tan color. So if you look due west of where the King Supers is and you jump over the SCL parcel that's in red, that parcel just on the kind of the northeast corner of Welton Reservoir, that would be zoned R-twenty-four. And so again, the, the Candela's commercial folks are going to give a brief presentation and talk about their vision of that property and why they want to go forward there. But in general, the changes to the land use map that are being proposed are also consistent with the water allocation that would be available based on previous council discussions that should they want to move forward with implementing these land use patterns, that they could do that to the extent of the R-six zoning, the R-twenty-four zoning and the commercial zoning. The one outlier in that is that the Fortune Property is not part of the Jefferson Center Metro District and therefore is not eligible for the water allocation that JCMD has. And so they're aware that they have a, a different water allocation conundrum that they need to kind of figure out. The next slide that I have is what modifications to the comp plan would be required should this be the land use pattern that goes forward? And so there are three that would be required. And starting from the east side, the circle there at the, roughly the Candela's Point area, that comp plan designation currently is zoned, or not zoned, designated as mixed-use and would go to commercial. The large area in the middle where they are considering R-six, that currently allows for mixed-use and commercial, which has residential components to it. And that would be changing to a suburban, a residential suburban, which is relatively low density. And then the other part is where they're proposing that R-twenty-four. And so that would go from a commercial designation to a high-density residential designation. And those would be the comp plan amendments required to allow this zoning to move forward. The other aspect of this is with Mr. Fortune's property, should the mixed-use districts go forward or the districts that Mr. Fortune is proposing, neither one of those would require modifications to the comp plan designation. They both work with inside it. It's just really more, it does, it would council give direction on, on their proposal versus just the MXS, which Staff has proposed. Staff is supportive of all of the requested changes. We've been working a lot with the property owners in these, in these areas to really get the information and saying, you know, what do you think the future holds here? And so I will say that we're supportive of it, but certainly that is subject to City Council direction. And then also on February eighteenth, so next Tuesday, we're going to be having a neighborhood meeting in Candela's that we'll be hosting, which will be also proposing this to the neighbors out there that we've been marketing and hopefully getting the word out there because we really want to get their feedback as well before making a final recommendation and also understanding where council sits. So at this point, I'm going to invite our property owner partners to give brief presentations. I've given them direction to only go ten minutes, but I'm sure with questions and other things that, that may go a bit longer. I'll introduce Kristen Dean. She's going to give the presentation for Candela's. Kristen is a former planner with the City of Arvada. She was a great planner here. She was here for about a year, and we were sorry to see her go. And then I'll turn it over to Jay Rankin with M.I.G., who is representing the Fortune Property. And then I'll stand up and do some closing remarks on that.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, good evening. I'm Kristen Dean with Norris Design, and I'm here tonight representing the Simron Group. And as you guys are aware, they have a significant, a significant amount of property that they still own in Candela's that is ripe for development. And they're really just looking at what is the right mix of uses to make sure that there's active and viable commercial uses and also a, a great sense of community for all of the residents that live there. So we have been working very closely with Staff. I'd like to thank Ryan and Rob and Carol for all the time that they have spent with all of us in evaluating... all of us in evaluating the new code and the zoning changes to see how they would affect the properties in Candela's and also future development in Candela's. And we are very appreciative of all of their efforts with this development code. We think that the new development standards are going to create great places and also facilitate a better process. So this map shows the properties that are zoned commercial essentially and mixed-use out of Candela's now. And the eastern, as you can see, the eastern and western portions of Candela's are really, you know, zoned heavily for commercial, with the center area as well having commercial development potential. The properties that are hatched are the ones that Simran would like to rezone to specific zoning districts through this process. So we've heard very clearly from the residents at Candela's and also City Council that there's a desire that commercial development create a sense of place, foster social interaction, and also offer a myriad of options for the community to not just shop and dine and access services, but also gather in a community setting. So Simran desires the same, and that's why they've spent so much time evaluating all of these code changes and the potential that is available to them and to the residents of Candela's and the city at large with the implementation of these changes. So that, under the current zoning, Candela's could see up to seven-point-two million square feet of commercial density. As evidenced by the slow build-out of commercial development in Candela's, and with the more recent market trends in commercial development, it's just not, seven-point-two million square feet is just not considered to be viable or even a reality out there. If there's too much land zoned commercial without the rooftops to support it, then this leads to undeveloped land, empty pad sites, and vacant retail spaces, as well as poorly performing businesses, which is not anything that any of us want. The commercial that has been built at Candela's Point is slow to attract tenants already. So with the recent independent Candela's retail study, it was found that there would need to be significant residential growth in Candela's to support the mature commercial market. For example, the study notes that each anchor tenant needs twenty thousand residents to support it. Rather than spreading the commercial out all across Candela's as it's envisioned right now under the commercial zoning, Simran would rather focus the commercial into the two distinct nodes on the east and the west ends, as well as in Candela's Point. So this demonstrates the proposed zoning. So I want to say, we didn't pick up all of the properties outside of Simran Holdings to show on this map and what their proposed zoning was. We weren't quite sure, so we maintained the existing zoning, which you can see the orange is the BP zoning, so that's your commercial zoning. And it looked like that on the east side, all of that orange would become red, so that would all be zoned CG with that commercial zoning. So the hatched red area along Indiana, that, those red areas are proposed to be rezoned to CG, so that's about thirty-five acres. With the yellow area, as well as that turquoise area, which equates about, well, the yellow area, they're proposing to be rezoned to R-six, and then also rezone that turquoise area to the R-twenty-four for higher-density residential development. So I'm going to go through each of these areas real quick and just explain the rationale behind it and how it's all very synergistic in facilitating the success of Candela's. So again, this area along Indiana, it's ripe for northwest commercial expansion. It's adjacent to the future Jefferson Parkway, surrounded by existing and future residential development. It really just will help to consolidate commercial uses in this area and ideally create that sense of place and those gathering places that people are interested in. In the, so along the western edge in that orange area, Simran is proposing to retain the BP zoning there, so just allow those uses to be developed under the current BP development standards and the allowed uses. And also, the purple area in the middle, that's where Candela's Point is, that's the BPR zoning, Simran would like to retain that existing zoning designation as well. They're also proposing to retain the existing industrial zone property that's just south of Highway seventy-two. So all of this commercial development combined would facilitate up to one-point-two million square feet of commercial development in Candela's for the Simran properties. So according to the recent independent retail study, commercial development in Candela's is much more population-driven than market-driven. So to support the commercial uses and ensure the viability of these commercial uses, Simran would like to rezone approximately two-hundred acres from BPR to R-six, and then also rezone fifteen acres to R-twenty-four. So the R-six property would enable the development of up to six-hundred-and-fifty single-family detached and single-family attached dwelling units, and then the R-twenty-four property could see up to three-hundred-and-fifty apartment units. So these apartment units could help meet the housing demands of your local workforce. Combined, these new residential developments could bring approximately twenty-three-hundred new residents, which would infuse energy into and support the existing and future commercial businesses in Candela's. With these developments, Candela's could see a total of approximately eighteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty residents, all contributing to the viability and success of the retail businesses in this northwest portion of the city. So Simran's very well aware of the importance of creating additional amenity and community gathering spaces in association with these additional residential units. And so we've already been working with our consultant team and Simran and the city to talk about what are the needs, what are the recreational needs for Candela's, and how can they be met with the future residential development? So a focal point of these amenities is already envisioned to be a five-point-two-acre park near Candela's Parkway with indoor and outdoor recreational opportunities, as well as outdoor community gathering spaces that could include programming for food trucks, movie nights, concerts, farmers' markets, and other similar uses. The library has also expressed an interest in locating a branch out here, and so Simran's in ongoing conversations with the library about that possibility. So we do plan to engage the current residents of Candela's in helping to identify what their desires are and what their needs are for these future community spaces. And we'll be setting up an open house pretty soon, once the rezoning all becomes effective through this process. So we're already planning on actively engaging the current residents of Candela's to program these future amenity spaces. So just briefly, what are the benefits of these zoning changes? So we still have one-point-two million square feet of commercial potential. There's also a significant reduction in traffic, because commercial development creates significantly more traffic than residential development. So when we're going from the potential of seven-point-two million square feet of commercial to one-point-two million square feet, that alone will help to reduce the traffic in the area, and bringing in or raising the population to twenty thousand residents to support the commercial businesses. Also, something to note is the significant reduction in height that would be seen. So under the Candela's ODP, the yellow area, the height that's allowed is a hundred-and-eighty feet. Under the R-six zoning, the maximum height is thirty-five feet. And then for the CG zone properties, the ODP currently allows a hundred-and-thirty feet, and then the maximum height would be forty-five feet under the new zoning. So we think that the residents of Candela's would appreciate the reduction in traffic as well as the reduction in height for these properties. So finally, just to note, you know, some of the other benefits that all of Candela's will experience and be able to be a part of is the new rec center, indoor and outdoor spaces. Really, we're really trying to find those community gathering spaces that bring people together for, like I said, the concerts in the park, farmers' markets, food trucks. The programming will be something that would be worked through at a later date, but really trying to think about those places, the central gathering places that the residents of Candela's could really enjoy. So that's the conclusion of my presentation.
And I assume you'll all be available for questions as we have them after we hear the presentations.
As Ryan said, my name is Jay Rankins. I'm with MIG, representing Mr. Fortune and the property that he owns at Candela's Parkway in Indiana. We wanted to give you a quick overview, a little bit of history, since I think it's the first time that you've probably heard this property in a little while. So on the site history side, the property has been in ownership of Mr. Fortune and his family for quite a while, and we really see this as an opportunity with the updates to the zoning code to kind of envision the project, think about how the comprehensive plan of 2014 and the current effort with Advance Arvada and updating code can actually help to inspire us to think bigger on the site, not necessarily size-wise, but a bigger vision. So the context, as was already stated, this is at the corner of Indiana and Candela's Parkway, just east of the reservoir you can see there, just south of the property that we were just discussing. And so looking at the site, something that we often do is think about the topography of the site. So this is, those are the topographic lines across the site. You will see three different sections taken across the site. There's a little yellow dash on both sides of the lower section, green in the middle, blue on the top, and those will correspond to elevations on the next side. And so going across the site, the southern portion, represented in yellow, has the greatest grade, and it climbs up basically to the reservoir. The flattest portions are on the east side of the site, whether you're on the southern portion, the middle portion, or the northern portion. We have the greatest gain on the south, like I said, and then some gain on the north, although it's the least. We also have the two primary waterways or drainage ways running through the site from southeast to northwest, existing frontages at Indiana and Candela's Parkway, existing vehicular points of entry, regional trail connectivity planned around the site, not necessarily through the site, and then the topography that I had mentioned. One of the things that we wanted to do in thinking about what was designated in the comprehensive plan, which is basically a mixed-use designation, was to begin thinking about, well, what are those potential mix of uses that make the most sense? And so we looked at really high-level indicators of market potential at this point, looking at vehicle trip counts, population nearby, thinking about how the site can support and implement the community's goals, and then thinking about that internal trip capture and street-level activation and creating a walkable mixed-use environment. So looking at the regional retail, we did an exercise where we looked at twenty-five of the larger shopping centers around the region, and when we looked at households, we got really excited. This area is quite affluent, actually, the third on this kind of top twenty-five list and putting the Fortune property in the mix, so a pretty affluent area. When we looked then at, and we did this only for five, a selection of five that we thought were most relevant, this takes a little more work, so if you'd like us to come back with more of this information, we're happy to do so. But we looked at the market conditions within two miles of these properties, including the Fortune property. We used Village of Five Parks as a reference, because we feel like that's a very relevant example nearby, Old Town Arvada, Stapleton, Belmar, and Union Station. And while we benefit from high incomes nearby, the population is actually extremely low currently. Obviously, that would change with the build-out of Candela's and the neighboring residential properties, but not getting, you know, close to a hundred thousand. The discussion was around twenty thousand-plus residents. Then looking at vehicle counts within one mile of these top twenty-five Denver commercial centers, and again, this is current, but we're actually lowest on the list there with about a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand vehicle counts. This is within a mile radius, so that's not to say any one of those roads has that much traffic. That would be nearly impossible, I think, unless it was a triple-decker. But you can see that we suffer a little bit from low traffic, at least today. And then another thing that we typically do in this process is look at what's around us. And immediately adjacent, we have the King Supers development, some pad sites, Starbucks across the street. And so looking at that development pattern, typically we would try to do something that's similar or that complements that. And so we looked at the retail frontage and thinking about a mixed-use, walkable environment, we typically will look at about four-hundred feet unless we're going to do one of those large commercial centers, like a King Supers or another anchor with some pad development. So you can see, that actually works out pretty well. It's along the frontages that exist. It's along those flatter portions of the site, so that's great. And then we looked back at the comprehensive plan, and that talks about vibrant neighborhoods, distinct living environments, community vitality, healthy living, enhancing about a small-town feel, and building community pride. Also, within the comprehensive plan, which you probably are aware of, this is a targeted redevelopment area and also designated a mixed-use area. So thinking about that mix of uses is where we really went with this exercise. And so the preliminary development concept, what we're showing, based on all those different factors, thinking about what is that build-out potential of this area, what's that kind of market capturing, what's the traffic going to be like, which are obviously drivers for retail and services and other commercial uses? And we're pretty excited about the opportunity at Indiana and Candela's. What we're showing there is a retail-commercial kind of service orientation right at that corner of Candela's and Indiana. We're showing also an office product, and perhaps that has some sort of form of making kind of space. That's where you can see that light industrial designation with the light purple there, and really embracing the park and open-space attributes of that waterway, and ideally both waterways as the development gets planned in more detail moving forward. But then also a mix of residential units within this. So, and so there's a breakdown in the lower right of the total parcel area by land use, so that's just the acres. So low-density townhomes at nineteen acres, for instance. Just because that's broken down into a lot of different pieces, here's a summary. This would be about forty-six acres of the seventy acres as residential use, nine acres as retail and commercial, that light industrial office designation at three acres, and park and open space at the other six acres, totaling that seventy. When we started to think about how might that lay out, this is obviously very blob-oriented at this point, but thinking about different structures, different types of uses, the orientation of the different roadways, thinking about an internal and external orientation of these uses, the retention of open space, not as turf, obviously, sort of a, you know, water-intensive product, as we think about that, thinking about xeriscaping, thinking about keeping the natural drainage channel, and really trying to create a place ultimately is what this comes down to. And so thinking about the orientation of the street, a walkable environment that is a destination, that's not limited, obviously, to just the retail and service orientation, but that's a key component, thinking about the permeability of these spaces, thinking about the community gathering space potential, looking at how the residential product might actually contribute to that walkability, the strolling environment that we'd want to be creating within the site, a destination for those nearby and across the Arvada community. Townhomes are a likely product as a part of the development that's envisioned, as well as, as we said, retail and service, I think really complementary to the other types of retail destinations around this general vicinity. Thinking about those gathering places and, or spaces and placemaking, both active and passive recreation opportunities, and then thinking about active and passive sort of treatments of the landscape as well throughout the development. And so this last little series here shows what that would look like on the ground, the existing, oh, I can't point up there, but just, I guess it would be to the right, kind of upper and right of the red retail-commercial space, that's across Candela's Boulevard, that's the existing King Supers for orientation. Towards us in the foreground is Indiana, and then you can see the reservoir in the upper-left portion of the image. And so what would happen is really this sort of continuation orientation of the retail and commercial around that major intersection, continuing what is proposed with the commercial orientation with office along Candela's Boulevard, or Parkway, excuse me, and then looking at a residential product further to the west. That's that same image that I showed earlier, starting to break that down into some different types of products. And currently, as Ryan had pointed out- And currently, as Ryan had pointed out, this is MXS, which is the mixed use suburban, which was the proposed zoning mapping designation by the staff. And in our conversations with them, we thought that while that is a really great designation for much of the site, and we would be interested in looking at that conditional use of residential within that MXS, we're also interested in exploring an R24 designation west of that major drainage way. One difficult, difficult access today. We like the tie actually to what was shown as turquoise in the previous map to the R24 that is proposed north of the reservoir. So sort of logical mapping there. And then really taking advantage of those frontages and creating a really kind of urban-esque, I guess, but more of a place at that corner of Candellas and Indiana. So with that, I will stop and we'll take questions.
Very good. Let's see if we've got any council questions at this point of either the two property owners, and then we'll go back with Ryan for some more. Mr. Marriott?
I have a question for Mr. Rankin, if you want to come back up and if you don't mind going back a slide or two.
No, I don't mind at all. It happens to still.
Yeah, that's, that's probably, that's probably okay there. So I'm a little bit surprised to see that out of 70 acres, that at least at this level of a concept, that you really only have nine acres thought of as commercial and that, that the depth is really just 400 feet from those two major roads. Because that pretty much kind of just makes strip centers, you know, kind of strip type development facing those two roads and then, and then leaves the rest. When it appears to me you have opportunities to have, you know, internal streets to this 70 acres, some internal streets without going too crazy, because obviously that's difficult, and that everything, it looks to my eye that it would be possible for everything northeast of that second drainage way of the southwestern drainage way, that potentially that could be commercial. I think I do agree with you that on particularly the far southwestern part of the site as it backs up to the, to the reservoir, that that
Yeah.
gets to have less commercial ability. But like on this rendering that you have here, you know, you've got the whole frontage along Indiana, the whole southern part of the frontage along Indiana is just being residential. And the, your internal streets, you know, particularly the east-west one there on the southern boundary of the property, that, that that just all feeds residential. And my question, I guess, would be that, that what are you using to base? I'm surprised by the, by the minimal amount of commercial here, and what are you using to base that amount of commercial being in demand, you know? Can you give us a figure of, you know, roughly how many square feet of commercial opportunity that would be in just that nine acres? And if, if instead it was the whole kind of half the property, what would the commercial?
Just as far as the, the square footage of retail that we're showing in there?
Yeah, about 200,000.
Okay, so about 200,000 square feet of the retail and service. So a couple of different pieces of the response to your question.
Sure.
Number one, we're in agreement that we're not quite sure sort of how that, the eastern and northern portions of the property would play out. Hence, sort of that suggestion of keeping that, that MXS, which you're probably familiar, that mixed use suburban designation. You know, commercial, service, retail is by right use, the residential is a conditional use, so there would have to be a conversation moving forward on that. What we're basing it on is kind of hedging our bets as far as sort of what's out there today, as well as sort of what the full build out is. And so with, you know, 20, 30,000 residents potentially in that larger two mile catchment area eventually, we may be able to support more. But as far as the orientation, we were actually looking at a product that is oriented more to a main street type of feel internal to the site. Indiana Candellas and Candellix, excuse me, will be major arterials, that's the nature of those roads. And to, so to create a walkable environment with cafe seating and those sorts of things along those roadways, we don't think is, it would be asking a lot of a retailer to be successful in that environment. But we do think that there's a valuable frontage there and the ability to create some internal sort of placemaking. And you're right, it could be larger than what we're showing currently. But that would be the general idea, is to create internal, an internal street network that that retail could orient to.
If, looking at this photo here, is it, the way you've got it drawn out between the MXS and the R24, if that whole MXS were to develop into some kind of a commercial use, whether it's ground floor and residential above, or, or only ground floor, you know, it could be, it could be any numbers of things, and then the R24 were to turn into residential, do you have an idea about the breakdown of square footage that that would yield?
For the commercial?
Yeah, for the commercial, instead of a couple hundred thousand square feet, is that?
Yeah, I'm guessing it's closer to about half a million if we rebuild out that whole MXS.
Yeah, it's probably 30 acres is over a million feet and a 0.2 FAR.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, somewhere between 400 and 500,000 square feet. When, what we're showing actually even with a portion of the MXS, as I guess, as we're showing, I'm sorry, excuse me, as we're showing here.
For what it's worth though, a big box is eight acres. So you could put four big boxes, not that those are in the market.
Right.
You could do Costco, Sam's.
This is Kevin Thomas, by the way, he's part of our team. But even as shown here, I just wanted to mention, one, there's an opportunity to do ground floor retail or and or commercial, other types of commercial space within any of those that, you know, if the zoning was changed east and north of the drainage way there. But as shown, without the commercial on the ground floor, this is probably about 650, 700 units in total, the yield there, residential units. Which you could probably achieve that even with the commercial underneath, so I don't think it's precluding that.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions for this portion of the project? Mr. Fiverr?
Well, I think, well, since we're talking about the Fortune property, I'll stick there. I would just encourage, you know, I, I feel like we're going to lose too much commercial, but you know, whatever works to make it successful. Have you thought of incorporating, is this a drainage? I've never looked at the property that close, but this little open space green belt that's in the middle there. It's, I'm assuming it's for drainage of some sort off the reservoir, whatever. Like actually taking the opportunity to push your commercial a little bit further. I know we kind of talked about this MXS. I believe with the MXS, you still would come and see us for residential portion of that, so it'd still have a hearing.
Yeah, that's correct.
So we would have an opportunity to probably discuss that a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, I think if the market could support it, I think you could create some really nice retail restaurant space along that green.
Everyone who knows me, I'm going to look for place, you know, place making opportunities. And when you, when we don't seize them, it's frustrating for me, and I'd rather sit and wait till the day happens, but, because we only get one chance at this usually.
Yeah, absolutely.
But, you know, one thing, being a resident of the area now, is just places to go to eat, hang out, just do things. And it doesn't always have to be a retail place either.
Right.
But an opportunity for folks to just linger and hang out and, and enjoy their community.
Yeah, the idea would be absolutely make that an amenity, as shown, that would be an amenity for residences along there, but also for the community. Our idea would be to actually pull a trail through there, and that's a large trend actually, is trail oriented development. So not just passive and active recreation along that trail, but also development that orients to it. We don't have a ton of examples outside of sort of the, the river corridor in Denver proper. But it's a, it's a growing trend nationwide, and I think this would be a great opportunity for it if the market is there when this would actually develop.
Okay, that's all I have for you.
Mr. Jones?
So this may be a question for Ryan. So if you take into consideration the 30 acres or so that would, that in this current configuration of MXS with the 1.2 million commercial square feet that Simran is proposing, and then the other commercial on the east side of Indiana, where are we number wise as far as commercial square feet? So we were total, and I think the total 7.1 million was just in the Simran development?
Correct, that was, that's, that's associated with the ODP of, of Simran.
So and, and so we've, we've heard that, but where, where are we now in roughly with commercial square feet?
Roughly with the preservation of what's going on with the King Supers property, the CG to the north, the, the 1.2 million there, what would happen across the street at Whisper Creek and, and the other developments. We're, we're at a significant, I don't want to use the word oversupply, but a surplus of available. So and one of the things that we've heard through conversations with council over the past year and a half or, or longer is really, let's take a wait and see and a phased approach. So we're okay and we're comfortable with letting some of these areas go, and we understand the reality of needing rooftops to help mature the commercial market. But we don't want, we know that we can get rooftops here in a heartbeat. That's, that's not our issue. Our issue is here is that we don't want to give so many rooftops away, or to bring so many rooftops in, that we lose that future opportunity. And so what we've been trying to do in having these conversations with various property owners is take that balance approach of just kind of taking a little bit of phase, doing it enough so that there's enough residential to make a difference in the commercial market, but not doing it enough so that we are losing the long-term opportunity of a broader and bigger vision that isn't evident that is mature in the market today and in the evidence that we see in the things that we're studying. However, we also don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot because just like things have changed from 10 years ago that got us here today, what's going to change 10 years from now? And we don't want to miss an opportunity because we seized on this one too quickly because of the timing. And so I think that there's a balance there that this property is being responsive of not only what it sees in the market today, but what it sees in the next 20 years, the Candellas piece sees that balance as well. But even if all of that gets developed today, the way that it's presented, we still have two or 300 acres that could give us three or four million square feet of commercial, should that be appropriate in this area at some future time.
Right, and so I think, I mean, that's the, that's the thing that I have to look at judiciously that says, look, we've, we've created this area out here where we've put, you know, where we're looking to put 20 some odd thousand people or more, based on how this could ultimately build out. But, you know, my responsibility is to make sure that, to what you just said, that we don't box ourselves into a place now where we've, where we can't develop commercially anymore. And so, you know, we, we have to, we have to do this in a, in a format that allows us space to grow. And so I think that the answer of two to three million potential square feet of commercial, I think, is a good answer. And, and one that we have to hang on to. So looking at, now kind of switching to the, to the residential question on this, you know, Simran, in the presentation said that, you know, they're proposing roughly 2,300 new residents.
So residents. So the, the number, so roughly, and Carol will correct me if I'm wrong, but in Candellas proper, in the area kind of north of Candellas Parkway, in that area, there's about 1,200 households, 1,200 households. And what we're talking about here is roughly in the R6 zoning that they're proposing, which is roughly 200 acres, is adding another 650 households.
2,300 people?
Correct.
Okay, because I'm, when you said, I thought, oh, my God.
Yeah. And then there, there is a multifamily that they're talking about, I believe, 350 units or so, that, those units there. And then these gentlemen are proposing, the number I've heard is about 650 households in that area. So roughly over the, say, call it, you know, 45 acres of residential here, I'm getting that number wrong. And then the 250 acres there plus the 15, you're probably talking about another 1,600 households. And the average density per household in this area of the city is 2.7 people per household.
Okay, so, you know, so again, the population's going to grow, the number of cars is going to grow. And we still have a transportation issue in, on Indiana and Highway 72 and Highway 93. And so those are going to create real problems. They're already, they are already real problems. And so we're compounding that with commercial, we're compounding it with residential with no apparent fix. And so that's something that we've got to take a look at, you know, as we kind of go into this. You know, again, we've promised in quotes to the people who, you know, live out there that there's going to be some commercial element and services available to them in northeast, or I'm sorry, northwest Arvada. But we've got some real transportation challenges ahead of us that, I'm not suggesting that Simran or the Fortune property are going to have to solve. But without some site, a line of sight on what those might be, it's going to be really hard. It should be really hard for us to, to approve any new project going in without some line of sight on what those transportation, what those corridors are going to look like five, 10, 15, 20 years from now. So those are just, again, some concerns that I have as we kind of look at this going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Fiverr?
While you're up there, Ryan, I'll get to the rest. So I, I want to reiterate, you know, and I've said this many, 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 many times, is we had a pool of commercial. We've eroded some of that, we could be eroding some of that. I want to make sure we're tracking, I still haven't seen the tracking of our, what is our inventory existing before, after. I'd like to see a report on that and make sure we, we see that. And that, that what I worry about is here's an erosion of 300 acres that's being proposed. And then what prevents four years from now when some of us leave or change, or eight years from now, to somebody come back and say, well, you know, that Indiana corner, we just want to put apartments, we're not even going to do anything. Now, we just continue to erode and we, we forget to remind ourselves that we need to hold on to this property. If you look at our tax revenue base, I'm really worried that we're, we're missing an opportunity out here. And when you look at diversifying and making sure that we have the right revenues to provide the services our citizens expect, we have to leave an opportunity for one, to collect the sales tax, two, for businesses to grow and thrive. And I get there's a delicate balance, but I want to make sure that there's some sort of like protection put in place. And that's what the water restrictions were originally, was to put some protections around here, and we, we just waived them on and we, we removed those now. Maybe that's a good thing, maybe not, but I'm worried about the guarantees. And I guess there is no guarantee. I'd hate for it to be all rooftops out here, and that doesn't help either. So we need to kind of think about some ways to manage this into the future and kind of keep some of it, because it, it's not going to happen overnight. This will, this will take years and years and years to see it all come together. But if we don't stay the path, then this is just fruitless for us. Because I believe majority of the tax revenue comes east of Ward Road for our entire city, right?
Well.
Well, where's Brian? He's not here tonight? The one night Brian doesn't show up?
So I, um, they, I do a lot of studying actually about where the different nodes are in the city. 27% of the city's sales tax revenue comes from the intersection at 52nd and Wadsworth, which is just a staggering number.
Right.
One thing, hopefully this comment doesn't get me in trouble, but I do think that it's a, an important point to make. I, I've said it out loud before and I haven't been stoned yet. But the, the, the balance in, in what you just talked is, it's, it's absolutely true that you need businesses to collect that sales tax. But what's important to remember is that they're collecting it from people. And so understanding that balance of where the people and where that revenue is coming from, that businesses, they certainly pay taxes, and I'm not minimizing that. But the, it's the community members and it's the residents and the visitors that are coming in that pay sales tax. And so it's the balance of the businesses are going to come when there's the people there that'll spend the money. And so it's the balance of the businesses are going to come when there's the people there that'll spend the money. And so we need both in order to drive that market, in order to help support the overall ecosystem that I think everybody is, is really looking for.
Yeah, and, and talking about the number of people out here, 19,000 possibly. If we don't protect those areas for a commercial, I guarantee you where they're spending their tax money. I know where they're spending it, because I, I, it, they're going to Broomfield, they're going to Superior, and they're going to Golden. Guarantee you. That's why they had to put an arrow over at Highway 93 for the residents to head to Golden. It's easier to go there. So, we're, right now, to me, this is a hole in the barrel and it's just leaking out the water. So we just kind of keep, keep mindful of it.
Jay wanted me to mention that him and his team had designed the Superior Town Center, so.
Well, don't worry, my tax revenue is going there right now, so that's where we end up going because it's more convenient, it's closer. But I want to go back into these households. So you threw some numbers out roughly real quick. So you said 600 units for-
So, the R6 and-
The R6 was 600 units for 200 acres-ish, right?
Yeah, go back to my presentation if you don't mind.
But then you also said 600 units for 35 to 45 acres.
So, the, the Fortune property, so that, everybody's familiar, I'm going to go back one slide just so we have the, the context. So, the, the yellow slide up there, they're proposing about 650. At, the approximate DU's in that case is about three DU's per acre, even though it's zoned R6. They, they, because of the topo and those types of things, it would be about an R3, which is very similar to the density that you're seeing in the existing area. And then the 47 acres or so they'd be putting, and I don't know what that DU count is. Do, do, I mean, is it seven or eight or? I mean, it's 47 divided by 650 or vice versa. So, I'm not going to do the math in front of you because it's going to be embarrassing.
We don't, we don't have Brian here tonight. So you said about 1,600 would be added.
Well, so where, where I got that was 650 from the R6, then the 350 for the, for the R24, so that making roughly 1,000, and then the 600 to 650 here, that's where I got 1,600.
Okay, all right, and so going back to the, to the Fortune property, I, I, I just wanted to make a comment. I think you're missing an opportunity on Indiana if you try to put commercial or residential on Indiana. I think just having conversations with several folks in this room and knowing what's happening along Indiana, I think that that's a completely missed opportunity by even thinking multiple fam- or multiple, multi-family dwellings being there. Also, you know, and I think for council to realize, you know, we approved a commercial development behind Starbucks and 7-Eleven, and I think what, one restaurant's going in and they're all doctor's offices? So, so that completely, we lost that, I guess it didn't happen as we anticipated who would be going in there. Shows more importantly that we should be really focusing on some office spaces around like SCL and, which I know that's happening. But, you know, I think we're mixing up our, who's going into the storefronts for services, not tax. There's no, there's no retail except for, I think it's one restaurant maybe, but they're 100% sold out.
Domino's is going in too.
Well, Domino's is going in according to the drawing I just saw, which is exciting. Across from King Supers on the other property, I saw it pop up on somebody's-
On the east side, east side of, of-
It's the east, not the west side?
Yeah, it's on the east side.
Oh, so that's a, that's, that's wrong.
It was originally going to go on the west side.
Now it's going on the east side?
It's on the east side.
So is that the one restaurant going in there?
I hope not, I don't think so.
Probably, but I, I don't, we can't control that. I think the point is, is there is a demand and we don't have the right product out. We don't have the developers putting the right product out to get, to handle that type of demand. So, I don't know what we can do, but something needs to move quicker than all of our retail space turning into doctor's offices.
Mr. Jones?
I agree, however, the challenge is, is that, you know, our job is not to fill the tenants, but our job is to keep the land safe for commercial development, whatever that commercial development may be. What we need is more individual investors being willing to take the risk on the area and bring their dollars in and develop a restaurant or, because all the doctors, they're going there for a reason, right? Unfortunately, there's not paying, there's no sales tax to be collected. So, we've got good, you know, business license use or use, business, whatever that's called. Anyway, so, no, I agree. I mean, it's, unfortunately, we can't pick and choose who gets to, to go into what spot. Fortunately, we've got developers that are developing these places so that, you know, they're available. We just, I don't know how much more, you know, Daniel and his group can do to sell the area.
Well, one of the things that we talk about in, in economic development is what you're trying to do is create the environment where those businesses want to be successful. I can't force anybody to go into a location if they don't believe that they're going to make money. What are the conditions around that area that they believe that they can make money? If they can make money, they're, they're going to come. And so what you're seeing are auto-centric retails, because that's kind of the nature of where retail is these days. The retail market is changing daily. And, I mean, Mr. Marriott brought up about Village Inn and Bar Leo and, and those types of businesses are going out. And, and it's even harder for a locally owned mom and pop business, restaurant and those types of things, to be successful that don't have the kind of national credit that those businesses do. And so when you're talking about an area that would require people coming from a larger distance to come into that area in order to be successful, those are some of the challenges that you're facing. What you're trying to do is build a significant enough local market so that enough businesses can be self-sustaining. You talk a little bit about transportation. I do not disagree with you at all that adding those people there is something that needs to be considered as part of that. But part of the other side of that conversation is also stunning, also understanding that by having local services, they're not going as far, or they're walking or riding a bike and those types of things. And so how are you striking a balance? Because people aren't having to go down to 64th in Indiana or further or Superior or Golden in order to get to those places. And so are you helping achieve some of those goals that way as well?
Yeah, no, and I, I agree. You know, it's obviously a multifaceted response and reaction and ultimately solution to, to this area or any other area as it relates to, to development. So, I totally underst- I agree with you 100%. Couple of questions that I remembered that I wanted to ask with regard to the Fortune property and the water issue. How, how are they planning to solve that question?
Would you like me to answer or would you-
Whomever, whoever has the best answer.
So, I'll, 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 I'll let the developers answer. I, I, I know, but I don't want to speak for them, so Kevin, do you want to?
Thank you. My name is Kevin Thomas, I'm a development consultant to Mr. Fortune. I've been working with him for three or four years now. I wish you had answered that question. I shouldn't be flipping water is an incredibly important issue to Arvada and to this region. Again, we, we live in an arid state. So, my apologies for being cavalier about the topic. We have two alternatives. Ideally, gross moves forward, they resolve their situations. Developments take time and ideally the timing works. You've got enough water to build out your city per your strategic plan. I think it talks about 2025 and that's probably going to be a challenge at this point, given what's been happening with gross. So, that would be perfect world. We realize that you can't control that, we can't control that. There's a lot of things in motion there. So our second alternative is we've had ongoing conversations with Consolidated Mutual. Mr. Fortune sold the, what used to be the Fortune reservoir to Consolidated Mutual and has had a relationship with that firm for a number of years. I believe, Bill, you talked to him as early as this week, so.
So you've got a couple of options?
Yes.
Okay, and then, so the, the, my follow-up question to that would be, you know, based on kind of your thinking and long-term planning, I, there was, at one point, there was a timeline that was shown in your presentation. But do you have a, a kind of an anticipated timeline as it relates to, you know, when you want to start? This is all conceptual now, I'm assuming.
Yes, yes.
So what's the timeline to make this more, I guess, not concrete, but, you know, more drawings on paper and formal applications? Because I think all that, you know, takes, plays into kind of the longer or bigger picture.
Yes.
So I'm just curious on what your timeline is.
Great question. Depending upon the market, depending upon the, the planning and approvals process. We would love to be in planning and approval this year. Infrastructure underway the following year, maybe 18 months. You can have some overlap with developers, vertical developers coming in towards the end of that. Three years goes by pretty quickly if you're moving, you know, forward now, so.
All right, no, I appreciate that. I know that's, that, you know, a lot of things can happen that either accelerate that or slow it down.
Yes.
But I just appreciate kind of the insight. Because it's, the Fortune property, at least in my time on council, which is four years, I haven't heard a lot about it. And so this is kind of new for me and, and I'm, I'm quite honestly, I'm a little excited to hear that there's some forward movement on it, so.
Yeah, it's, it's been, it's exciting, exciting time. And in the market, you know, to your credit, the efforts that you all have made are beginning to bear fruit, all the things that you've invested in. And it's exciting time out in that part of the city, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Ryan, I just wanted to clarify something that was in the Candela's, or, let me see here, Candela's retail study report. The consultant talks about new retailing concepts and inclusions. What, what are, what is the consultant talking about with new retail concepts? Is this the mixed-use concept with?
So I think that, so the report you're referring to is a report that was prepared by a retail consultant that Aida works with, Katie Press. And she prepared a report on Aida's behalf so that we could understand this market as well as other markets around the city. And I believe that the concepts that she's talking about and things that we've talked about in lots of areas, and a lot of those concepts actually have made their way into the land development code in, in certain development requirements about placemaking. So it's about not just, you know, the standard pad site development and understanding that you're going to have five pad sites along the street and, and this is how it's going to operate. It's really about understanding placemaking and about how they're using, as I think Jay pointed out, various public amenities as those entities. And so when we're talking about that, some of the things that we are trying to drive to from both an economic development and a planning perspective is that we are not just having a developer want to put as much square footage there as, as humanly possible because that's where they make the money, but having a place where it would be a destination because people enjoy being there. Not just because they want to go and get an ice cream, but because they want to get an ice cream and then sit next to a park or a river or those types of things. That there's a lot more to what retail development needs to be in the future besides just a destination that you would go, get your thing and then, and walk away. It's about community gathering places and placemaking. And that's really an effort that we are trying to push forward in this city so that the limited retail and service opportunities that we have are really viable for the future because people want to go there as opposed to get their things off of some online retail option.
Thank you.
Okay, Ryan, I'm, Mike, I'll direct towards you. On, on the Fortune property, you know, I tend to be where, I think some others have been that, you know, on that Indiana corridor, we really ought to emphasize commercial and, and retail operations versus town homes or, or multi-family. But that's not a decision we have to make right now with the zoning you're proposing because any residential would have to come back to us for a conditional use permit.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, where, where staff was is that because this is related to the comp plan designation, we were going to do the whole thing MXS. And through further, more detailed conversations with, with the Fortune property team, they really came back and said, we appreciate that, we like the MXS, we think that it's appropriate, but not over the whole site. So we would like council to consider as part of this conversation, the R24 in the area that makes sense because of the topo, because of the, because of the drainage ways and those types of things. And then council would have the right to preserve this other area to see what could work there in the future.
Okay, and then moving to the Cimarron, we would not have the same type of delayed decision-making as to the residential there because it would be straight residential.
It would be straight R6 residential, both the R24 and the R6. Both of those upon approval of, of city council, if they were to approve it, would go into administrative tracks within the new land development code.
Is there any way to carve out a portion of the residential, you know? It took flipping forever, but it's turned out pretty nice, the Village of Five Parks, where, you know, even in a, you know, pretty densely residential area, you've got a pocket of commercial, you know, that creates sort of a town center. I'd like to see that kind of opportunity. Is there a way to, to, to have some zoning reflect that?
Well, certainly we, we could. However, I, I think, and probably speaking for Cimarron here, where we would kind of look at that is the, the purple on this map up here is all zoned commercial and mixed-use.
Right.
And when you look at it within the context of not just what is being rezoned at that R6, but how it relates to the entire area, those are areas that we really feel would serve that need. And so one of the conversations that I've certainly had with Jeff Nading and his group, who, who own that area, is that they're, the leasing on Candela's Point right now has not been as robust as they would like. And so building more commercial in the center of that, which is competing with that, is not necessarily serving e- either development in the proper way. If we looked at that Candela's Point area, and I think that there's about 30 acres altogether or 30 acres or so in that area, that would certainly make way for a Village of Five Parks-type area that I think would meet the needs that you're talking about.
Okay, any other questions from council on this portion of the presentation? Ms. Ford?
So Ryan, in terms of the trails, you know, moving around the entire development, are those set yet or?
No, so there are trail master plans, there are park master plans, there are park requirements related to every house needs to be within a 10-minute walk. All of those standards that are so important to the culture of Arvada are going to be integrated into this. But because this is a, a change in, in what was there before, how they're integrated would take collaboration between the development review team and then the parks team, Gordon Ruessing's team. And we would work closely together with the property owners to make sure that all of those goals in the, those parks master plans are reflected here. And we would not have any shortcomings to the residents here.
So, am I understanding correctly that we're looking for trails to, to take people to these commercial areas?
Well, yes. So we want connectivity, not just to take people to these areas, absolutely. We want them to be able to get to amenity space so that they can get out of their cars and stroll with their families and all those things. But also, and if Gordon was here, he could be a lot more eloquent, eloquent than I can. But these are part of regional trail systems that I believe go all the way to Rocky Mountain Arsenal and, and, I mean, the Green Bay, the Green Way Trail is in this area and connecting all those things. So you would, the intent is to have access to the hundreds of miles of trails and not have gaps. That's another city council strategic result that you guys are fully aware of. We wouldn't want to create trail grabs, gaps as a part of this development. So that would be filling in all those gaps in this area and, so.
Yeah, and I guess I'm thinking more of, you know, integrating the different area of developments with trails so that residents can have opportunity to move from different commercial, commercial centers if we get them.
Sure.
That's what I'm, in other words- That's what I'm, in other words, we're, we're trying, you either have this idea of the main streets like 93, you know, the, the quick, you know, stopping in, the quick stores, or if we're creating this place-making feel, then, and we're trying to get people out of their cars.
Those are absolutely part of the overall development philosophy of all this. And one of the things that I will compliment the Cimarron group on is that when they're intending to build this 200 acres or so of R6 zoning, what they don't wanna do is build 200 acres on an island separated from all the other development in it. They're really trying to integrate this development with the others and that the amenity spaces that they wanna provide are the, intended to be amenity spaces for all of Candela's and the surrounding areas and those types of things. And so that helps illustrate the point of integration and place-making for the community, not for a subset.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
So that brings up a good question. So if we move this to R6, those amenities, how do we get assurance because that it will happen? The 5.2 and whatever is said in the community, because that is done administratively afterwards, we won't see it.
Well.
So what accountability is?
So, so from, from a staff's perspective, from the team's perspective, there are park development requirements administratively. So they are required to build amenities that are, are part of this, that it would be necessary. And certainly, staff is aware of the promises and the communications that they have been having with the larger community, and so we will make sure that all of those things are integrated into the review process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any additional questions. How much more presentation do you have on other topics?
Well, the only other thing I have is on affordable housing parking. So if we can do that in a minute, no, no. If you, if you wanna do a stand-in place or?
People wanna just keep plowing through?
Okay. If you can go back, I think you are.
I guess we do need a break.
Okay, I apologize. Well, here, yep. Sneak preview for.
Yep.